Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the June 25th Board Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPS staff, and members of the community that are here with us in person and those watching this meeting via livestream. Now let us begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will call the roll to recognize board members to establish that we have a quorum. Mr. Said.
Hello, everybody. Sammy Said, student member of the board, and I am totally excited to be here for my last board meeting on the Montgomery County Board of Education as a student. Thank you. So I made sure to wear the same outfit I wore in my first board meeting to recognize it's a first full circle moment, so happy to be here today.
Good afternoon, Shebra Evans, District 4. It is such a sad but happy time, bittersweet to see Sammy leave us, but he's done such great things, and happy summer to everybody. So good to see everybody here today.
Good afternoon, Rebecca Smundrowski, District 2. I too want to share my most sincere excitement for your future and sadness for us losing you. You've been an incredible, incredible board member, and in making sure, wanting to make sure that you never forget us, I made you a little something just to take with you. You have to open it.
Thank you so much.
You have to open it.
I was not expecting this. Thank you so much, Rebecca. I appreciate it.
Just wanted to say thank you. I was not expecting this. Thank you so much. Should I open it? All right. All right, we'll do it. It says, "My motto, my tagline, I am thrilled to be here because before every, every single meeting," that's what I said. Rebecca.
Every meeting.
I cannot, I cannot express to you how much this means to me. I will hang this in my college dorm at UMD.
Well, I don't ever want you to forget where you're really thrilled to be.
Yeah, so thrilled. Thank you so much, Rebecca. Seriously, that means a lot to me. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns, and I too am going to miss your unique enthusiasm and energy for this work. You have, you have elevated all of us in trying to keep up with you, and I really do appreciate all that you've done this year very much.
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5. Sammy, what can we say? Who is going to do the closed session resolution? And you've got to make sure that your successor memorizes it.
I will make sure that that becomes a tradition among every student member of the board from this point on.
We're going to add it as a job requirement.
Yes, make sure to do that.
Along with the birthday cake.
Cutting the cake.
Good afternoon, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3. I'm so happy to see everyone. Happy summer to all of you. And Sammy, when you first day, when you first meeting, when you were here, I say I could feel, I can feel your enthusiasm across the table, and after one year, I still can feel that. So kudos to you, and you energize all of us to do, to do the work for the school system. Good luck in college, and I fully expect to see your name someday on some ballot very soon.
That's exactly right. Thank you so much, Julie.
Sammy, guess what I have? Cookies for you.
I'm notoriously always here for the food, as Brenda knows.
So we will be appointing our student member of the board on July 1st, and we'll be celebrating Sammy further on that day. So I'm Carla Silvestre, President of the Board. Now we can begin the meeting with the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Okay, so we are now moving on to our third item on our agenda, which is a very special day today as we appoint our new superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools, which we are all here to do today, and we are pleased to appoint Dr. Thomas Taylor to the position of superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools. Round of applause, please. Dr. Taylor, Dr. Taylor is an MCPS alum and has more than 25 years of experience as an educator with more than 12 years in district-level leadership and six years as a superintendent. He has served as the superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools since 2021. Dr. Taylor holds a doctorate in education from the University of Virginia and a master's of business administration from the College of William &amp; Mary. The board is confident in Dr. Taylor's leadership and looks forward to working with him to support all students and all employees. As we make this appointment, my colleagues and I would like to take a special moment to recognize Dr. Monique Felder's work to create stability for MCPS while serving as the interim superintendent. Dr. Felder saw us through an important period of transition with steady and thoughtful leadership. We express our appreciation for Dr. Felder's service and wish her well on her future endeavors. And now I am going to read the resolved on our motion, and I will ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Taylor for the position of superintendent of schools. Be it resolved that Dr. Thomas Taylor be appointed to a four-year term as superintendent of schools for Montgomery County, Maryland, effective July 1, 2024, contingent upon final negotiation of an employment agreement and the written approval of the state superintendent of schools as required by law.
So move, move approval. Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous. Congratulations. Okay, and now Dr. Taylor will have plenty of opportunity to address the, the community in his first board meeting and his first, first days here next week, starting on July 1st, but we also have the pleasure of having several appointments today, and so now I pass it on for, to administration for those appointments.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Silvestri. I am Dr. Henry Johnson. I'm serving as the acting interim superintendent of schools today, and I am happy to pass this on to Dr. Taylor beginning on Monday. So today we have several very important appointments. All of them are important, but these are especially important as they're the end of the school year and moving into a new school year, so I am happy to present these people to you today. The first person that we would like to present to our community is Mr. Marcus G. Jones, Chief of the Office of Security and Compliance, an Office of the Chief Operating Officer, and he is with us today. Mr. Jones brings to Montgomery County Public Schools more than 39 years of law enforcement experience, both in the field and in administration. He looks forward to joining MCPS to assist in maintaining a safe and secure environment for students, staff, and our community. He is honored to accept this position and to work in a collaborative environment with a new superintendent and other significant role players for transparency, safety, and accountability. I present to you, Board of Education, Mr. Marcus Jones as our Chief Office of Security and Compliance.
Move approval.
Proudly second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Congratulations.
The second appointment among us today is Ms. Brittany T. Love Campbell, the principal of Gaithersburg High School. Joining her today is her husband, Brian, and daughters Brianna and Brielle. Ms. Love Campbell has been employed with MCPS for 11 years as a teacher, a resource teacher, and most recently as assistant principal of Gaithersburg High School. Ms. Love Campbell looks forward to continuing to support the Gaithersburg High School community and making it a place where excellence is a standard. Shout-outs to her parents and family who are watching online, and to Dr. Christine Handy, Mr. Cole Sasek, and Mr. Kerry Demick. To the board, I present to you Ms. Brittany T. Love Campbell, Principal, Gaithersburg High School.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Mr. Gregory Miller, Principal of Walt Whitman High School. Joining him today is his wife, Kimberly Miller, and children Leila, Sadie, and Miles. Mr. Miller has been with MCPS for 10 years as a teacher, content specialist, assistant school administrator, assistant principal, and most recently as the principal intern at Walt Whitman High School. Mr. Miller is a fierce advocate for students and is honored and excited to serve as the next principal of Walt Whitman High School. Shout-outs to his mother, Jacqueline Simmons, who instilled in him a drive and a passion for learning. Mr. Gregory Miller, Principal, Walt Whitman High School.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Mrs. Shanice Brevard, Principal, Shady Grove Middle School. Joining her today is her husband, Darrell, her daughter, Sage Dillard, and her mother, Sandra Coleman.
I was not expecting this. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to say, I was not expecting this. Thank you so much. Should I open it? All right. All right, we'll do it. It says, my motto, my tagline, I am thrilled to be here because before every, every single meeting, that's what I said. Rebecca.
Every meeting.
I cannot, I cannot express to you how much this means to me. I will hang this in my college dorm at UMD.
Well, I don't ever want you to forget where you're really thrilled to be.
Yeah, so thrilled. Thank you so much, Rebecca. Seriously, that means a lot to me. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns, and I too am going to miss your unique enthusiasm and energy for this work. You have, you have elevated all of us in trying to keep up with you, and I really do appreciate all that you've done this year very much.
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5. Sammy, what can we say? Who is going to do the closed session resolution? And you've got to make sure that your successor memorizes it.
I will make sure that that becomes a tradition among every student member of the board from this point on.
We're going to add it as a job requirement.
Yes, make sure to do that.
Along with the birthday cake.
Cutting the cake.
Good afternoon, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3. I'm so happy to see everyone. Happy summer to all of you. And Sammy, when you first day, when you first meeting, when you were here, I say, I could feel, I can feel your enthusiasm across the table. And after one year, I still can feel that. So kudos to you, and you energize all of us to do, to do the work for the school system. Good luck in college, and I fully expect to see your name someday on some ballot very soon.
That's exactly right. Thank you so much, Julie.
Sammy, guess what I have? Cookies for you.
I'm notoriously always here for the food, as Brenda knows.
So we will be appointing our student member of the board on July 1st, and we'll be celebrating Sammy further on that day. So I'm Carla Silvestri, President of the Board. Now we can begin the meeting with the approval of the agenda.
Move approval?
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Okay. So we are now moving on to our third item on our agenda, which is a very special day today as we appoint our new superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools, which we are all here to do today. And we are pleased to appoint Dr. Thomas Taylor to the position of Superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools. Round of applause, please. Dr. Taylor, Dr. Taylor is an MCPS alum and has more than 25 years of experience as an educator, with more than 12 years in district-level leadership and six years as a superintendent. He has served as the superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools since 2021. Dr. Taylor holds a doctorate in education from the University of Virginia and a master's of Business Administration from the College of William &amp; Mary. The board is confident in Dr. Taylor's leadership and looks forward to working with him to support all students and all employees. As we make this appointment, my colleagues and I would like to take a special moment to recognize Dr. Monique Felder's work to create stability for MCPS while serving as the interim superintendent. Dr. Felder saw us through an important period of transition with steady and thoughtful leadership. We express our appreciation for Dr. Felder's service and wish her well on her future endeavors. And now I am going to read the resolved on our motion, and I will ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Taylor for the position of Superintendent of Schools. Be it resolved that Dr. Thomas Taylor be appointed to a four-year term as Superintendent of Schools for Montgomery County, Maryland, effective July 1, 2024, contingent upon final negotiation of an employment agreement and the written approval of the state superintendent of schools as required by law.
So move approval? Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Congratulations. Okay, and now, Dr. Taylor will have plenty of opportunity to address the, the community in his first board meeting and his first, first days here next week, starting on July 1st. But we also have the pleasure of having several appointments today. And so now I pass it on for, to administration for those appointments.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Silvestri. I am Dr. Henry Johnson. I'm serving as the acting interim superintendent of schools today, and I am happy to pass this on to Dr. Taylor beginning on Monday. So today we have several very important appointments. All of them are important, but these are especially important as they're the end of the school year and moving into a new school year. So I am happy to present these people to you today. The first person that we would like to present to our community is Mr. Marcus G. Jones, Chief of the Office of Security and Compliance, an Office of the Chief Operating Officer, and he is with us today. Mr. Jones brings to Montgomery County Public Schools more than 39 years of law enforcement experience, both in the field and in administration. He looks forward to joining MCPS to assist in maintaining a safe and secure environment for students, staff, and our community. He is honored to accept this position and to work in a collaborative environment with the new superintendent and other significant role players for transparency, safety, and accountability. I present to you, Board of Education, Mr. Marcus Jones, as our Chief Office of Security and Compliance.
Move approval?
Proudly second.
All in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous. Congratulations.
The second appointment among us today is Ms. Brittany T. Love Campbell, the principal of Gaithersburg High School. Joining her today is her husband Brian and daughters Brianna and Brielle. Ms. Love Campbell has been employed with MCPS for 11 years as a teacher, a resource teacher, and most recently as Assistant Principal of Gaithersburg High School. Ms. Love Campbell looks far to continue to support the Gaithersburg High School community and making it a place where excellence is a standard. Shout outs to her parents and family who are watching online, and to Dr. Christine Handy, Mr. Cole Sasek, and Mr. Kerry Demick. To the board, I present to you Ms. Brittany T. Love Campbell, Principal, Gaithersburg High School.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Mr. Gregory Miller, Principal of Walt Whitman High School. Joining him today is his wife Kimberly Miller and children Leila, Sadie, and Miles. Mr. Miller has been with MCPS for 10 years as a teacher, content specialist, assistant school administrator, assistant principal, and most recently as the principal intern at Walt Whitman High School. Mr. Miller is a fierce advocate for students and is honored and excited to serve as the next principal of Walt Whitman High School. Shout outs to his mother, Jacqueline Simmons, who instilled in him a drive and a passion for learning. Mr. Gregory Miller, Principal, Walt Whitman High School.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Mrs. Shanice Brevard, Principal, Shady Grove Middle School. Joining her today is her husband, Darrell, her daughter Sage Dillard, and her mother, Sandra Coleman. Ms. Brevard has been employed with MCPS for more than 20 years as a teacher, resource teacher, consulting teacher, assistant school administrator, assistant principal, and most recently as principal intern, South Lake Elementary School. Mrs. Brevard is excited to continue her journey at Shady Grove as the leader of the Wolf Pack, where she will focus on building community with staff, students, and parents, ensuring that all students who are part of the Grove thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Shout outs to her children who could not be here today, and to her friends, family, and staff who have supported her on this journey and are watching online. I present to you Ms. Shanice Brevard, Principal, Shady Grove Middle School.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Ms. Natasha Bolden, Principal, Stedwick Elementary School. Ms. Bolden has been employed with MCPS for 18 years as a teacher, instructional specialist, acting director, assistant principal, principal, and most recently, executive director in the Office of School Support and Well-Being. She looks far to building meaningful relationships with the staff, students, and families at Stedwick Elementary, and creating the conditions that will lead to equitable outcomes for every student. Shout outs to her mother, Avis Davis, her son, Kari, and all of her colleagues turned family from South Side, Jamaica to MCPS. I present Ms. Natasha Bolden, Principal, Stedwick Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
Love a good fan club.
And next, Mrs. Arian M. Clark Harrison, Principal, Chevy Chase Elementary School. Joining her today is her husband, Ramon Harrison, and Mrs. Pamela Parker, Principal, Montgomery Knowles Elementary School. Ms. Clark Harrison is returning to MCPS after a year's educational sabbatical. She has 16 years of MCPS experience as an assistant principal, acting principal, and principal. She looks far to joining the Chevy Chase Elementary School Cheetahs and continuing the legacy of cultivating curiosity and creativity. Shout outs to her family, friends, and colleagues watching online in Maryland, Maine, Mississippi, and California. Ms. Arian Clark Harrison, Principal, Chevy Chase Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
Mr. Ryan T. Graves, Principal, Carter Rock Springs Elementary School. Joining him today is his wife Julie and daughters Autumn and Ivy. Mr. Graves has been employed with MCPS for 19 years as a teacher, staff development teacher, assistant school administrator, assistant principal, and most recently as a principal intern, Poolsville High School. He looks far to joining Carter Rock Springs to support the students, the staff, and parents, and ensuring academic success and well-being for all students. Shout outs to his parents, Tom and Kathy Graves, for their support. I present Mr. Ryan Graves, Principal, Carter Rock Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And next, Ms. Kimberly A. Henriquez, Germantown Elementary School. Joining her today is her husband Mario and sons Gus and Diego. Ms. Henriquez has been employed with MCPS for 19 years as a teacher, a staff development teacher, assistant principal, principal intern, and most recently as the principal of Rock Creek Valley Elementary School. Ms. Henriquez looks far to rejoining the Germantown Elementary community where she began her MCPS career. Shout outs to her parents, her principal mentor, Diana Zabatekas, and her brother and sister who are watching online. I present Ms. Kimberly Henriquez, Principal, Germantown Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And finally, Ms. Catherine A. Schwartz, Principal, Sligo Creek Elementary School. Joining her today is her daughter Sid and colleagues Jackie and Kathy. Ms. Schwartz has been employed with MCPS for 23 years as a special education teacher, a special education resource teacher, assistant principal, and most recently as the acting principal, Woodfield Elementary School. She looks far to joining Sligo Creek Elementary, where she will support the students, staff, and community, ensuring equity and excellence for all. Shout outs to her husband Steve and daughters Corinne and Carolyn who are watching online. I am pleased to present Ms. Catherine A. Schwartz, Principal, Sligo Creek Elementary School.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
And Madam President, that concludes our appointments for today.
Thank you. So now we are now moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Recognitions. Dr. Johnson, can you proceed?
I'll wait for them to get out.
Just give it a minute to transition.
Just the last one?
Yeah.
The last in person?
Last in person, yeah. So, I mean, it's now 20, so there's 16 who are going to speak, and four, you know what I mean? So like those numbers are 16 and four.
Whenever you're ready, yes.
So Ms. Silvestri, this afternoon, I am pleased and honored to recognize our distinguished Hispanic scholars, and I'd like to read this resolution. Whereas the Hispanic Alliance for Education recognizes Hispanic high school seniors who have been identified as distinguished Hispanic scholars through academic excellence, community involvement, and leadership, and whereas the Hispanic Alliance for Education has awarded scholarships to distinguished Hispanic scholars from each of our 26 high schools in Montgomery County Public Schools at the Distinguished Hispanic Scholars Award Ceremony on May 9th, and whereas Montgomery County Public Schools celebrates and supports the many contributions and accomplishments of our Hispanic-American students to our schools, our community, our state, and our nation, and whereas the Montgomery County Board of Education celebrates Montgomery County Public Schools for holding a high standard of academic excellence and recognizing the outstanding achievements of Hispanic-American students. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the interim superintendent of schools, staff members, students, parents and guardians of Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of the Montgomery County Board of Education congratulate the recipients of the 2024 Distinguished Scholars Awards.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations to the scholars.
Our next group of distinguished scholars are Vietnamese scholars. Whereas the Association of Vietnamese-Americans awarded $1,000 scholarships at the annual Academic Awards Assembly held on June 2nd to two Montgomery County Public School students for their excellence in academic performance, leadership skills, and community involvement, and whereas the Association of Vietnamese-Americans has recognized exceptional Vietnamese-American students attending Montgomery County Public Schools to assist Vietnamese-American students to achieve higher education goals, and whereas Montgomery County celebrates the many accomplishments and successes of Vietnamese-American students, and whereas the Montgomery County Board of Education is proud that Montgomery County Public Schools continues to recognize the academic achievement of Vietnamese-American students. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the interim superintendent of schools, staff members, students, parents and guardians of Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of the Montgomery County Board of Education congratulate the recipients of the 2024 Association of Vietnamese-Americans Academic Awards and Scholarships.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Congratulations. I think we skipped over 5.1, the Maryland High Education Commission.
Hang on.
Okay.
Can we come back to that?
You have guests here. Okay, so we'll start. Huh? Okay. Welcome, Dr. Rai. Pleasure seeing you here, and I understand you have a citation for us today.
Yes, ma'am, more than one. Thank you, Chair Silvestri and member of the board. First, thank you on behalf of Governor Moore and Lieutenant Governor Miller for outstanding work that you do in Montgomery County in providing education to about 165,000 students. This is very important work, and we really appreciate everything that you do. I am enormously honored to be here with you to speak briefly about a very important partnership between Montgomery County Public Schools and Montgomery College. I am talking about dual enrollment programs, and specifically, early college program, middle college program, P-Tech, and jump start programs. These are early access programs that provide students opportunity to earn high school diploma and also an associate degree from Montgomery College at the same time. I want to share some unique features of your programs in Montgomery County. Over the last several years, about 900 students have graduated with high school diploma and an associate degree at the same time. That's a record for the state of Maryland. Certainly, these are the largest program in our state, but I believe these are unique in the nation. Why I call them unique, because these students not only get an associate degree, but these degrees and credentials are aligned with the economic need or business community. So your students are graduating with associate degree in nursing, allied health, cybersecurity, cloud computing, engineering, business, life sciences. Your business community has strong need for homegrown talent in these areas. These programs are a result of strong collaboration between our two institutions, Montgomery College and Montgomery County Public Schools. These things will not be successful without a close collaboration between these institutions. Also, two leaders who have been there with these programs since their inception. I had the opportunity to work with them for several years. One, certainly, Dr. Genevieve Floyd from Montgomery County Public School, and Dr. Elena Science, Elena Science, from Montgomery College. So with that, I have two citations from Governor. I would like both of them to come forward. I understand they are here, and I'd like to present them these citations with your permission.
Thank you.
Okay, so you are here for Genevieve. Dr. Science, again, thank you for your leadership to these programs. I, we want these programs to continue and expand. They are actually a model for the state of Maryland, and we are looking at them very closely. Dr. Science?
Thank you, sir.
And again, please say my hello to Dr. Floyd. Again, this is a citation to Dr. Floyd for, for her leadership for these programs since the inception of these programs. Madam Chair, thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rai. Thank you for the citations, and thank you, Dr. Science, for your leadership.
Thank you, everyone, and up next we have public comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of address for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such disruptive behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disrespectful behavior during public comments will be asked to leave the room. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have 16 people who have signed up to provide in-person testimony. Each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the table, speak clearly and directly into the microphone. 30 seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have four people signed up to provide video testimonies. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on board docs on our website, where they are posted with other materials for this meeting. Okay, if we could get our first six speakers to come forward. Austin Tucker, Jennifer Martin, Laura Mitchell, Yegs Cohen, Laura Stewart, and Nancy Sepola.
Okay, Austin Tucker, you may begin.
Good afternoon. I am Austin Tucker, pleading that you find a way to fund MVA for students who need this unique learning environment to grow and thrive. As a sixth grader in MVA, I know that it started as a COVID response, but it is now the way of learning for many of us because in-person school is not the answer. I was so traumatized from being bullied in public school that it developed stress symptoms and lost the whole year. However, MVA helped me cope with lingering symptoms. It also completely changed me from being timid and scared of school to being confident and eager to learn with A's in accelerated reading and math and high MAP and MCAP scores. Now, like others in much worse situations, I am terrified of losing all that progress. Our parents were allowed to enroll us for fall, but they are now searching desperately for a virtual school like MVA. Unfortunately, they have very few options because of deadlines, high costs, and limited instruction. Please listen to your heart. Please don't fail us. I've heard where there's a will, there's a way to tackle any problem. So I must believe that you are willing to listen to our voices and see MVA tremendous impact. I must trust you're willing to change your mind and find just $5 million to take care of your most vulnerable students. Are we not more than worth it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Martin, may you begin. Jennifer Martin, may I begin?
You may be relieved to know this is the last time I'll be making public comment here as president of MCEA. While we've been disappointed at times by your reluctance to speak forcefully and act decisively as leaders, we've never doubted that you, like we educators, care about our families and our students. We know that you recognize how difficult our jobs are. Like ours, yours is an underpaid, understaffed, and underappreciated role, but your responsibilities are equal to those of any county leader. You have the solemn duty to provide an excellent education for our students and also to oversee a mammoth transportation system, food services, mental health services, and more. Yes, the county council has the hard job of raising the necessary revenue, but you must stand firm in demanding full funding for our schools. So don't be intimidated into settling for less than is required to ensure the quality of our public schools. MCA is already out there fighting to get what's needed, but we would have more success if you would join forces with us. MCA thanks Dr. Felder for all she's done in a short time to begin addressing longstanding problems. She's been a refreshingly honest and approachable leader, treating our union not as an obstacle but as an ally. She's earned our trust and appreciation. MCA welcomes Dr. Taylor as superintendent. We urge him, along with the board, to press the council for a special appropriation so that class sizes can be restored and services maintained in FY25, such as MVA. And we look forward to working with him to improve the teaching and learning conditions in our schools so that staff and students thrive. Over 20 years ago, I chose to become a teacher in MCPS because of its reputation for excellence. That reputation must be upheld. Our students deserve nothing less, and our county's prosperity depends on our collective commitment to public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Mitchell, I may begin.
Thank you. I'm Laura Mitchell, and I serve in many roles with several organizations, but I'm here in my personal capacity today. Hope is a feeling of expectation and a desire for certain things to happen, a feeling of trust. I see budgets as a demonstration of your priorities and usually a hopefully story of what's to come. The FY25 budget and the work that I see coming is very concerning for me because there are other things happening in MCPS right now that are focused on well-being, or rather not, and can't be explained away by a budget shortfall. Together, I feel like we're broadcasting to our students, our staff, and our families that well-being, student well-being, is no longer a focus of MCPS, and that is very concerning for me. For years, we advocated for more mental health, trauma mitigation, and substance use prevention and care in our schools. After return to school from COVID, we finally started to see some movement on that. We got support in that. We hired a medical officer to help oversee these medical conditions and intervene and move us forward, and we did. We did a lot of great work, informed and educated thousands about fentanyl and other substances, provided harm reduction strategies and tools, correlated resources, shared those out, coordinated access to care and pathways for recovery, updated policies and curriculum, and began a paradigm shift to understand that these are medical conditions that require medical treatment. With the removal of that office, I am very concerned that we will go back to where we were before she was hired, where we were losing a student a week to overdose and suicide primarily. We can't go back there. We simply can't. For a mere $800,000 to run that office each year, what is a life worth? What is a student life worth? Please read my full testimony. I emailed it to you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Yakes Cohen, you may begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. I am the DEI chair for MCCPTA. First, I would like to officially welcome Dr. Taylor to MCPS. I know that my colleagues and I look forward to officially connecting with him after July 1. Dr. Taylor remarked last week that change can only move forward at the pace of trust. We wholeheartedly agree. However, that pace of trust requires fuel in the form of increasing MCPS's organizational transparency. I am here today to ask that MCPS be clear and honest about its hiring practices and procedures, and that the board similarly be clear and honest about its oversight over these. Last week, we became aware of a number of leadership and organizational changes. We have questions about how these decisions were made and their timing. We believe transparency could have been and will be best served by communicating explanations to the following. Who made the decisions? Why did these occur days before the announcement of a new superintendent and at the end of the interim superintendent's tenure? Were staff, community partners, or other stakeholders consulted? What were the justifications? Hearing none, we might be led to the unfortunate conclusion that this was a matter of rearranging the deck chairs on the proverbial Titanic. We are also concerned that the decision to remove well-being from the former OSSW, the decisions to eliminate the chief medical officer, close a virtual academy, and remove well-being from the department's name seems to herald a move away from MCCPTA's stated priorities relating to the health, mental well-being, and safety of all MCPS students. We acknowledge that some personnel matters are legally required to be kept confidential. However, for families to no longer feel lost in translation, we need MCPS and the board to serve as faithful interpreters, clearly articulate the processes by which decisions are made, explicitly demonstrate fidelity and compliance with due process, and lucidly explain the rationale for those decisions. Those are the preconditions for trust. We look forward to renewed commitment by MCPS and the board to their stated goals of transparency and accountability duly accompanied by actions that clearly demonstrate such commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Stewart, you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Laura Stewart. I am a Board of Education candidate, and I am speaking as an education advocate. I welcome Dr. Taylor back to his native Montgomery County. I'm a huge fan of Grow Your Own initiatives, and it's great to see that we grew our own superintendent. I know that we all want to give him the best chance to succeed. Unfortunately, the reorganization of central office, as detailed in the memo published by Montgomery Perspective, has called some advocates and parents to further distrust that the system will prioritize reputations instead of prioritizing students. Now there is uncertainty as to what the overall structure of the central office will be on July 1. It is my experience that uncertainty leads to bad actors slipping through the cracks. This is what compelled me to speak today. I encourage that increasing transparency should be the first official act of the new superintendent. First, the memos sent to employees about Brian Hull's departure and the subsequent changes in organizational structure should be on the MCPS website, which is not there today. Major changes in the central office of a $3.3 billion system should be public information. Second, whenever there are changes in structure, even if it's temporary, an accompanying organizational chart should be published with the names, positions, and links to their contact information within 48 hours. Third, there should be an immediate review by the new administration of any structural decisions made since June 17. Finally, I ask to keep the Title IX coordinator position as independent as possible. As laid out by MSD, the duties span both employee and student protection. Until a new COO is appointed, the Title IX coordinator should report to the superintendent instead of either the Chief of Human Resources and Development or the Chief of District Operations. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you. Nancy Sepola, may I begin?
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Sepola, and I have been a teacher in MCPS for 30 years and have been fortunate enough to teach at the Virtual Academy for the past three years. It is imperative to rely on evidence and data to guide our decisions on the programs that serve our students. Today, I will discuss the data from our lower school so you can see the value of our program and who is affected by your decisions. The performance data for our lower school shows that we surpassed the average achievement in MCPS in both reading and math. Unlike MCPS, which averaged 46% in math and 55% in reading, we achieved averages of 84% in math and 77% in reading. Our notable achievements include 73% of first graders and 69% of second graders reading at or above grade level on DIBELS, 64 proficiency among third, fourth, and fifth graders on MAP-R, 72% of our first graders and 74% of our second graders proficient on MAP-P, 66% of our third graders met proficiency on MAP-M. Additionally, 90% of fourth graders and 89% of fifth graders in virtual math instruction met proficiency. The true data story of the MVA shows that the virtual instruction works for elementary students. Our students were not only thriving, but they were exceeding standards. At the Virtual Academy, our student population is predominantly from the global majority, 35% African-American and 31% Hispanic. Furthermore, our school has a 54% farms rate, yet we did not receive any Title I funding or benefits. I ask the board to consider your core purpose of preparing all students to thrive in their future and your core value of equity. Think very carefully about the students who have been harmed by your decision to close the Virtual Academy. Many are economically disadvantaged and represent the global majority. How does this fit with your values? We ask that you request supplemental funding from the county council in order to fully fund the Virtual Academy for FY25 and beyond. You must remain earnest and steadfast in your vision of providing the greatest public education to each and every student.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for testifying. Please, if we could have our next six speakers, please come forward. Charmaine Parsad, Alyssa Williams, Thomas Eckelmeier, Jaroslava Jonevsky, Sophia Eckelmeier, Charmaine Parsad, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Charmaine Parsad. We are still reeling from the shocking decision to close MVA after being told it would stay put for fall. More stunning is the reluctance to even pursue the only short-term solution to the chaos we feel. That is, MVA supplemental funding for just one more year. We deserve no less. MCPS suggested learning alternatives simply cannot work for many kids, and it is too late and too costly to find full-time virtual schools. If you were in my place, would you send your child back to in-person school when it failed him twice in kindergarten, where he was bullied so badly that he developed stress symptoms, and again in first grade? Would you homeschool after MVA proved to be exactly the kind of virtual learning he needs to thrive? As a responsible parent, I simply cannot do that. Not when MVA changed my son from being timid and scared of school to an engaging, confident A student in accelerated reading and math with high MAP and MCAP scores. As parents, we must rely on you, our elected officials, to ensure that your most vulnerable students have equitable access to learning opportunities to reach their full potential. Only yesterday, I heard from credible sources that funding is the core reason for closing MVA, not previously cited reasons. However, it is not too late to communicate in an open public forum, listen to each other with an open mind, and find a way to reverse an unfortunate decision. We can make it work, even if it means scaling back your proposed supplemental budget for school safety, to put aside only $5 million for a safe and nurturing environment for our most vulnerable students. Their well-being is just as important as many other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Williams, may I begin?
Hi, my name's Alyssa Williams. I am a teacher for MCPS and have been here for 19 years. I most recently worked at the MVA. I think MCPS should ask the county council for supplemental funding to keep the MVA open. A synchronous virtual program is an innovative way to deliver instructions, solve scheduling issues, and increase student support, allowing students from diverse backgrounds to access the full MCPS curriculum in a supported format, regardless of their physical, linguistic, or socioeconomic factors. MCPS can further leverage our virtual program to deliver instruction at schools that find it difficult to fill their FTEs or offer advanced classes in any subject, allowing students to extend their higher into higher-level courses without leaving their home schools. This is a cost-effective solution, offering students more core and elective subjects without putting a strain on our resources. The virtual program could also collaborate with IIS to meet students' needs who are able to participate in more comprehensive educational experiences but are not able to return to the school building, providing them with a full schedule of courses and teacher support, allowing them to keep up with their cohorts. It's essential for students who learn best outside of a traditional classroom, but it could benefit all students by extending synchronous options outside of the school day, especially for students who are currently doing asynchronous online pathways to graduation and credit recovery programs. This would allow students to experience academic success and get back on track to graduate. As technology continues to advance, the advantages of virtual programming will only continue to grow. Delivering a robust, equitable, and innovative program should be a priority. Thank you.
Thomas Eckelmeier, may I begin?
Hello. Due to the recent decision to close the, oh, sorry. Is this, okay, there we go. Due to the recent decision to close the MVA, I thought that now would be a more important time than ever to talk about why the MVA is so important to not just myself but others. You see, I am immunocompromised. I have a damaged liver, and I am currently on a transplant waiting list because of that. Going to in-person school would mean the risk of catching disease such as COVID-19. If it were to catch such a disease, I would lose my eligibility for an organ until the illness is over, meaning that if an available liver was open, I would not be able to receive it. Going to the MVA prevents this risk, as there is no chance of catching disease from school. The MVA was also a place like Selden. The use of technology allowed for far better learning opportunities and helped me understand subjects more. I did far better in the MVA than I did in any in-person school, and the comfort of my home, along with being able to type rather than write, which is something I've always struggled with, made the MVA feel more like a comfortable learning community compared to a regular school. The MVA is also safe, as being in your own home prevents getting into any altercations with students. But that doesn't mean you can't interact with them positively. The MVA still allows for people to chat amongst each other during after-school classes. Communication is actually even better, as people can still be there and feel even more relaxed. I want the MVA to stay, both because it is important to my health and because it prevents far greater learning opportunities for me than any in-person school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jaroslava Jonevsky, please begin.
Hello, my name is Jaroslava Jonevsky. Thank you for letting me speak. I have a drug-resistant epilepsy. I am disabled, so going to the MVA was the safest option for me. When I was going to in-person school in middle school, I was falling downstairs and getting concussions. I was getting injured lots, pretty much constantly. And I, my school said they would not be able to keep me safe. So the MVA was the best option for me, and it is the safest option for many students with, who are disabled. I know for a fact that if I went to an in-person school, I would be getting injured and falling down and getting even more concussions. I, when we found out that you, that the MVA was getting closed, we said that I was not going to be going to in-person school. So we were going to have to find out different ways, which were not good. They were not good ways to keep me learning, and it's just, the MVA is such a great school, and please consider the disabled community before getting rid of the MVA, because it is just an amazing place for many students such as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Eckelmeier, may I begin?
I'm speaking today about the recent decision to close the MVA. The MVA has allowed our son to focus on learning while protecting his mental health. For my husband and myself, the most important aspect of the MVA is that it provides full-day synchronous instruction of the standard MCPS curriculum taught by MCPS teachers, which is not something our son will get from homeschooling or a private online school. IIS is not a full day of instruction and does not provide the full MCPS curriculum. MVA also provides a benefit which none of the other options do, which is the community of other students throughout the school day in classes, as well as social engagement opportunities provided by the MVA. Considering all the benefits provided by MVA, we believe that it provides an outstanding return in value on the funds required to support it to the county taxpayers, and it does this at lower overhead costs than brick-and-mortar schools of the same size. We are a military family. Our son has had a serious medical condition since he was four, and we have experienced school systems in England, Colorado, and Maryland, and the MVA is by far the best option for students with medical, special medical needs. MVA is by far the best option for students with medical, special medical needs. Closing the MVA and forcing students to return to learning environments that risk their medical, mental, and/or physical safety will have a disproportionately negative impact on some of the most vulnerable students in MCPS. I would like to join with other families to respectfully ask the Board of Education to request supplemental funding from the county council to keep the MVA open. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Kenya Romero, may I begin?
Good afternoon. My name is Kenya Romero, and I'm in eighth grader. I'm here to ask to keep the MVA open, because the MVA matters. It is not just a program. It's a school. It's our second home. If I have to go back in person, I would have to fear to be a victim of a gunfight, of an overdose of fentanyl. Schools are not safe these days. I would have to fear every day. I would have to -- I was a victim of bullying since kindergarten to the half-year of third grade. I would have to -- I would always have to fear about being bullied, always have to fear of maybe being in a gunfight, maybe being in an overdose of fentanyl. There was nowhere safe for me. Having the MVA gave me a safe environment where I felt safe, and I felt as if my second home. It gave me a place where I can learn efficiently, ethically, and I could always learn in a safe environment where I felt safe and I didn't have to worry about the things I mentioned before. Having the MVA is a place where students can learn, and they can actually learn. In-person school, you're not able to learn correctly. They do when they bully you. When they do things incorrectly, the school does not do nothing, act like nothing happened. But the MVA is responsible. They do things correctly. So I ask you, the board members, to keep the MVA open, because the MVA must stay. It's an important school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all for your testimony. If we could get our next four speakers to please come forward. Patty Winters, Yolanda Belton, Jaime Paira, and Barbara Galasso. Patty Winters, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Dr. Johnson, Board President Silvestri, members of the Board of Education. I am speaking today to follow up on my June 21 testimonial regarding the office of the School System Medical Office closure effective this Sunday, and I want to thank President Silvestri for your prompt and thoughtful reply to that email. I watched the portions of the June 11 business meeting that covered all public testimonials and the board comments regarding them twice to try to understand which expenses were deemed more valuable. Before that, I knew nothing about how the MVA empowers the students who need it, and so I'm now asking you that you find a way to continue it along with the OSSMO. In searching the MCPS website for answers, I could only find explanations for why the pre-K expansion plan is delayed and why class sizes will be enlarged, on average, by one student per class. I know the remarks about how you did not want to make the hard decisions to end the OSSMO and the MVA were from your heart, but don't hurt choices like these reveal what our priorities are and who we are. I do not understand why ending these services is still somehow necessary, despite how both have enriched our youth and our community and that there was no planned alternative for them for the coming academic year. I don't doubt your commitment to supporting the MCPS community, from every student and their parents or guardians to every employee. I am asking that you apply your commitment to finding creative strategies that will allow these offices and agencies to continue. I'm happy to help in any way I can. And please read the rest of the testimony that includes information about an erroneous video on the cable channel.
Thank you. Yolanda Belton, you may begin.
As a mother with children who are medically fragile, I was elated with the creation of the MVA. The children finally had a place where they could fit in and thrive, because they didn't thrive in the traditional school setting. There was finally a safe place for them to learn. My children, as well as hundreds of other families, were devastated when we found out the MVA would not be funded for the following school year. The MVA has been instrumental in my children's success. The best interest of all students should be our number-one priority. Taking away the MVA takes away the opportunity for many students, including my own children, to excel in school. I sincerely hope a solution can be made and the MVA will be restored for the next school year. It's not fair to the children to take the Virtual Academy away, especially at such short notice, leaving parents scrambling to find an alternative. And most of the alternatives that were given are not feasible or a good fit for the majority of families. The MVA has become vital to success for my children, as well as hundreds of others. Please find a way to fund the MVA. The MVA is not just a school, but a community for my children and hundreds of other children. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaime Paira, may I begin?
Thank you. My name is Jaime Paira. MVA is very important for us and our kids for different reasons, like mental health, bullying, medical issues, and violence. Cannot go in-person to the school. We are more than 100 families. We are suffering for this decision. Taking that last minute, I would like all members of education be on our shoes and feel that we're suffering for our kids. To know that you're gonna close the MVA. My son is 15 years old, and since last three years, he's been able to go to the school because he's been suffering bullying in his middle school. He just finished ninth grade and MVA with great notes. My son cannot go outside, and for us, for us, it's very difficult. So I implore you that you can try the way to support the MVA. Because for us, as a parent, that's the only way, the only choice that we have now that we are in Montgomery County. I used to live MPG, and like three, four years ago, I moved to Montgomery County, looking for my better school for my son and my little girl. But now that I'm here, I think, I just wish that I please, I beg you, find a way for us. We are members of a community. And please, Ms. Silvestri, I implore you, me, Spanish, helping us. Please be in your shoes and don't give us your back. Helping us try to find a way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Barbara Galasso, you may begin.
I don't know how I'm supposed to go behind that now. First of all, I'm here to say that we're all heartbroken and hopeless right now. We don't know what to do. We know you guys are stuck in a position, but please understand the position that we're in. I'm sure you guys remember me from the last time I was here, and I was thinking about apologizing, but I decided not to, because I'm a mom who's fighting for her children's lives. And at this point, it's by any means necessary. I come to you today stressed out and depressed and desperate for the MVA to reopen. I'm so scared to send my daughters up for failure by sending them into the building, especially my twins, who are now freshmen. They're super stressed out about going to Northwest High School, and my poor third-grader, who has only been a student in the MVA. She's extremely anxious about going to the school. So needless to say, this isn't the fun summer that we expected to have. COVID taught us how to do things differently, and I'm baffled because it's 2024, and you could pretty much do anything virtually, but we can't do class every day? I just found out today that there's virtual summer school. How is there a virtual summer school? And how is there virtual when there's winter and there's snow? But we can't have virtual for these sick children, for this man who's crying, trying to save his children? I have a question for you guys. If you were to break your leg, are you able to go virtually to work? Are you able to stay on top of your -- on top of your duties? Or are you gonna be forced back into the building? I come to you today ready to fall to my knees, literally, and beg you to please just write a letter. We spoke to Mr. Juwondo last week, and he said he needs a letter from you guys to even think about giving supplemental income. You see, we keep showing up. You see, we're sticking together. Please, help us. There's a noose around our neck right now, and we don't know what to do. Alls we ask is for you to please write the letter for the supplemental income. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next testimony, thank you, speakers, is a video testimony from Majid Khan. Please play the video.
Hello, my name is Majid Khan. My son is a student at Northwest High School, about to enter his junior year. I am not comfortable with the Anti-Defamation League promoting nor endorsing projects and initiatives at my son's school. The Anti-Defamation League bills itself as a civil rights organization, but it is not an ally to movements dedicated to justice and equity for communities of color, especially not for Muslims, Arabs, and Palestinians. Regardless, many stakeholders in government and educational spaces find themselves in spaces with the ADL, using its anti-bias education materials or counting on it for political support. Even though the ADL is integrated into community work on a range of issues, it has a history and ongoing pattern of attacking social justice movements led by communities of color, queer people, immigrants, Muslims, Arabs, and other marginalized groups, while aligning itself with police, right-wing leaders, and perpetrators of state violence. More disturbing, it has often conducted those attacks under the banner of civil rights. This largely unpublicized history has come increasingly to light as activists work to make sense of the ADL's role in condemning the Movement for Black Lives and Palestinian Rights organizing. I am deeply concerned that the ADL's credibility in some social justice movements and communities is precisely what allows it to undermine the rights of marginalized communities, shielding it from criticism and accountability while boosting its legitimacy and resources. The ADL has not hesitated to work to take down any progressive organization or leader of color, no matter what their track record of support for marginalized communities or present-day efforts to fight for justice, if they cross the ADL's line of what constitutes legitimate discussion on Israel.
Our next speaker is Sterling Hyde. Please play the video.
MVA families and staff have rallied to let you know that the Montgomery Virtual Academy is a vital point of access for our community. Families have given up vacation time, missed doctor's appointments, put our health at risk, and worked round the clock just to have the chance to save our school for our children. Students should have been celebrating the end of school. They are instead worried about losing their school and their community. Some of them refused to attend the last days of school. Others were having anxiety-induced chest pains or even seizures. Instead of enjoying their hard-earned summer, these families are just fighting for basic educational access for their kids. And every time that we've tried to defend the school on its merits, the goalposts have shifted. First, it was poor performance, but come to find out, MVA is actually commensurate to MCPS and sometimes better. Like math and reading, elementary growth is actually higher than MCPS. Then it was declining enrollment, but the data show that despite closing the first grade, there was actually 1,200 applicants for the 24-25 school year and a waitlist. Then it was lack of money, but in spite of us finding a path forward with our county partners for supplemental funding, the board simply refuses to even discuss it, in spite of a brave member actually advocating for it in public. Every time a new criteria has been offered, we have refuted it, and MVA's worth has been shown. Yet, after months of raising our voice and weeks of just pleading for the board to speak to these families, we're told that there's actually nothing that we can say to change the board's mind. Was there ever a time that we could change this decision, or are we just being led along? Board is elected to represent the community and ensure educational access for every student. Whose will is it to close the MVA? It's certainly not the community's. Whose educational access is being ensured by closing the MVA? It's certainly not MVA students. Whose success is being enabled by closing the MVA? And is the cost to our children's physical health, mental health, and progress worth the price? Show these kids that you care about their voice. Request supplemental funding.
Our next speaker is Courtney Evans. Please play the video.
Hi. Today, I asked my fourth grader what he remembers about being in-person, and he had just one core memory from kindergarten: a frustrated teacher being inches from his face yelling at him. He was also bullied on the bus and forced to sit on the lap of his bully when the bus was overcrowded, and his sensory needs were unmet in the classroom. He struggled to choose between feeling distracted and becoming a distraction. He was even reprimanded for using a weighted pencil topper at the suggestion of his OT. Like several of his MVA friends, his safety and learning needs were marginalized, and he was falling through the cracks. My kindergartner is in IIS due to a medical vulnerability, in spite of being a vibrant, intelligent learner. She sometimes refuses school because she doesn't feel connected to it, and why would she, when she's missing classmates and the equivalent of 153 school days per year in IIS? In what world is that an acceptable alternative to the MVA? Too many kids were trapped in IIS for years. MVA gave them community and opportunities for achievement. How can you dismantle that? It's cruel to keep these kids in IIS before. It is unconscionable to send them back now. In 2024, nearly a third of MVA students were neurodiverse or medically vulnerable. This population is more likely to be bullied in-person and attempt or complete suicide. They are also higher risk for medical complications. IIS and COSAs are not going to meet the needs of these kids, but MVA is a lifeline. You recognize mental health as a top priority by rolling $5 million of support positions from extra funding to baseline budget. So I have good news. The MVA is also a mental health resource, and it doesn't require any extra funding. By simply delivering education in a safer, more flexible environment, MVA meets diverse physical, academic, and social-emotional needs of many students. And MVA can support Pillar Four of the blueprint while creating cost efficiencies if the administration will just look at it with fresh eyes. Even Chairman Juwondo recently publicly acknowledged the need for a virtual program, but right now, MCPS lacks in both vision and political will to address barriers to learning in our county. Children are not only falling through the cracks, they're being shoved into them or pushed out of the system altogether. Please, Dr. Taylor, Ms. Silvestri, and members of the board, keep our kids and our county on track by requesting supplemental funding to restore MVA for fiscal '25. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker via video is Ryan Goldman. Please play the video.
Hello, my name is Ryan Goldman. Dear members of the Board of Education and members of the community at large, MCPS has not followed proper KUMAR rules with the elimination of the Montgomery Virtual Academy for the upcoming school year. MVA has provided an equitable education and community to 800 students and their families in which our children were thriving in environments suited to their learning needs. MCPS has not provided an alternate, appropriate option for our children to learn in. After first deciding to continue a virtual academy for at least one more year, MCPS has now changed that decision and has only given families less than three months to attempt to transition their children to in-person school, when some students have not been inside a school building in four years. There are approximately 160 students with IEPs and Bible board plans whose needs and progress were not considered with this closure. My son is one of those children. He is nonverbal and on an autism spectrum. He has made great progress in the virtual academy, and now, if I choose to homeschool, he will lose his Maryland State-funded autism waiver and Medicaid benefits. And he is not alone. As parents, we must consider the consequences of sending children that have been prospering in their current learning environments back in-person, but I also have to consider losing my son's benefits. It's not right. Please consider asking for funding to provide appropriate learning environment to our children for this upcoming school year. The MVA closure has left many of us with no place to turn. IIS services for medical needs only provide four to six hours of education per week, and our children deserve the full education that they have been stripped of. Please ask the county. Please ask the state. Please ask whoever for help. Our kids are not budget-line items. This is their future.
Thank you. This will conclude our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for public comment is Thursday, July 18, 2024. Signups for public comment will open on Thursday, July 11, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the online signups for public comment, we allow for in-person same-day signups when space allows. Unallocated slots may be filled on a first-come, first-served basis on the day of our meeting. In order to sign up in-person, please arrive 15 to 20 minutes before the start of the open session and sign the form. In-person signups will close 15 minutes before public comment begins and when all -- or when all slots are filled. I will now see if my fellow board members have any comments or questions before we continue with the agenda. before we continue with the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, we will now move on to consent. Agenda item number seven, consent items. Board members, do you, anyone have any items that they would like to pull?
I do. I would like to pull item 7.1.
All right. Seeing no other lights, can I get a motion to move 72 through 717 and block?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Okay. If we could get staff to come to the table to speak about 7.1, please.
There's, 7.1 has many items. The items I'm, I would like more information on is 4938.1 and 4979.1. Hi, Dr. Peel.
Hello.
Items 4938.1 is about school-based in-person or virtual mental health service in the summer.
So I have the equal-opportunity schools item.
Oh, so that's a different. I was wondering why you're sitting there for that item. Okay, let's move to 4979.1, which is increasing access to AP and IB courses, which are great efforts. I'm wondering, this one says that they will provide, it is by providing their service to us, is by providing data and support to remove barriers. So my question is, what data can they provide, an external office provide, about our schools and our students that we do not have?
Yeah, excellent question. Thank you. So Equal Opportunity Schools started in the state of Maryland a number of years ago, and it began with some pilots in each of the districts. And really, what they have is a platform. And in that platform, they're able to survey students. So they tell us first, are you disproportionate in the number of students who are participating in AP, IB by race and ethnicity? And then work specifically with those schools to deploy surveys to the students. And in developing those surveys, you get an insight card, a student insight card. So all of this is information we could get, but it's not information we do get. We use their platform. It's about their educational goals, their career interests, who the trusted adults are in the building, who might be a staff advocate, and what study skills supports they might need. It also gives what subjects are they interested in and any reported barriers, like why haven't you signed up for an advanced placement course? The students get to actually authentically answer that. And then their own learning mindsets, their readiness factors, that gets populated into a student card. And then teachers get to see that card, who identified them as a match to be a supporter of the, of the student. And what did the student actually identify as barriers? So that is probably the most unique piece of information. It's not information we couldn't get, but it's information we're not designed or set up to get at this point.
So, in a nutshell, what you're saying is they are doing a survey of our students who are not taking the AP or IB courses and created some information data for our teachers to use.
Correct.
And the price tag is $280,000 to do the survey.
That's correct. And it increases annually.
Okay. And he also say they do it by provide support for our programs. So the support, basically, they provide a student profile for us.
No, thank you for that. Actually, they come to us. We have a district liaison who works with our teams. They provide in-person professional learning for teachers twice a year so that they understand how to use that data to ensure student belonging, to do outreach. They network across the 19 high schools that use this platform in order to exchange best practices. So it is, it's, it's a combination. They have a data platform, and it does also include academic data. So it tells, you know, what, what is their GPA and additional things that we provide to them. So, but it's all together in one nice card. And then the professional learning is for the equal-opportunity team to work, to look at that data, to analyze that data, and determine what their next steps are going to be. And it coaches them through thinking about barriers that they may not have perceived or seen or realized in their communications with students. Some of the things that teams come up with are, you know, some of the students say they don't take high, high classes because nobody ever asked them to. You know, why am I going to try and do something harder? And so using that data, then the team can actually strategize. Who's the best person? Who does that child trust? And who can they talk to? So in addition to the two in-person professional development and the surveys and the cards, they do webinars because when they do the spring survey with students about their interests, then they walk the team through understanding what they're seeing in each of their data so that the schools can create their own goals based upon what their data say. And then there are virtual check-ins throughout the year to see is that, are we making progress? Are more students signing up? Are students sustaining in those higher-level courses? Are they getting the supports that they need?
So, to summarize what you said, out of our 25 high schools, we have 19 that are engaged with them. And the 19 schools get two in-person training session or discussion session.
Yes.
To look at the student profile that has been created through the survey.
It's, it's actually a process. It's about learning about equity and learning about perceptions of students first. So they have a, basically a four-step process.
Have our system, have our system ever estimate what it will cost if we do this inside our system?
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna add real quickly. I do remember when we first started the Equal Opportunity Schools, and at that time, we did not have the 18. But as a result of having the 18 schools enter into this program, we saw a very huge increase in students that didn't see themselves participating in AP and IB. Dr. Smith and I, our prior superintendent, we went to the National School Board Association Conference to really share how that has helped the adults in the building to be able to help identify students. So it was a really great opportunity. And this is work that we were doing prior to the blueprint even, suggesting that we get more of our students into AP, IB courses. And I know it's been quite some time since we kind of geared back up. But, you know, this also went back to the Equity Resource Study and just our system finding ways to make certain that we were creating more access and opportunities for our students. So the Equal Opportunity Schools, I mean, I speak highly of them. They, it was really a great opportunity for us to see more students, particularly students of color, be introduced to AP and IB courses. And as a result, we've seen great results from just that support that was provided to the, the counselors or who, I don't want to identify, but for the adults that were participating in the professional learning. I just wanted to add that.
Right.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you, Mrs. Evans, for that information. So one of my, the reason I ask this is, it's great initiative, right? We want to open access for our students for more rigorous courses and challenge them to take intellectual risk and pursue, you know, rigorous courses. And so my question stem from, if we are spending our money on this, we also need to have the accountability, right? What results are we seeing? Or if it's the same barriers that we identify every single year, then, you know, it's the same set of barrier we identify every year. Then identifying the risk is not our work. You know, identifying the barrier is not our work. Our work is continue to address the barrier. And I think in the past few years, our system have done a great big deal of effort in the anti-racism audit, in putting the staff, development, teacher, in putting in other mechanisms, right, in our schools. So I just want us to be conscious of evaluating all our initiative efforts contrast to make sure that everything is covered, but also we are streamlined all our initiatives, not duplication of services.
Thank you for that. Then there have been evaluations. I would have to pull them up to see what those evaluations were. But I do know the recommendations are about increasing the sense of belonging that our students have in general for a variety of reasons. And when students get to the high school level, we had over 5,000 students in those 19 schools who actually, who were first-time AP, IB classes, who are taking those higher-level classes because of the very intentional work that the school is doing using this process to better understand their students and their barriers.
So I would, excuse me, I'd like to add, Ms. Yang, that I was a part of the initial program that introduced equal-opportunity schools, as Ms. Evans said. And I think probably what we need to do is to bring back to you and other members of the board some longitudinal data around the, around the program since its inception, probably in 2017 or 2018. So we can provide you with that information so you can see exactly how the program operates and the benefits it has to those students, particularly in underrepresented populations of our student body.
Are they, anyone to answer the, the other item? Or any staff member available? Thank you, Dr. Peel.
I know you gave the number, but could you?
Say the number again.
Or read what it is.
Okay. School-based in-person and virtual mental health therapy services responsible office, da, 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 da. And this is for, as an extension of the mental health services currently provided to MCPS students by JESSA in the summer. This is a summer camp. So I have a few questions about this.
Go ahead with your questions.
Thank you. So are we continuing our partnership with JESSA this school year? And how much is that?
So we are continuing our partnership for mental, therapeutic mental health supports with both JESSA and Thrive. It's part of the operating budget, $1.6 million. Part of it is going to be funded through local funds, and the other, the, and the $800,000 is going to be funded to Title IV. This item is a little bit different. It's an extension of the current contract that we have through additional Title IV funds. And it's going to be for a specific summer camp that provides supports for students that are currently receiving JESSA services. So that's going to be continuing through the summer, and it's also supporting students that are also in the McKinnyvento, that, that receive services through the McKinnyvento Act.
So to, for clarification, is this for summer 2024 or 2025?
This is for this summer, 2024.
So has counselors already identify these people?
So yes, it is the students that are already receiving the services, and it's going to be a specific summer camp. JESSA will be providing the transportation, yes.
Okay, so it's in-person.
Yes, it is in-person.
And they are responsible for the transportation and location?
Yes.
Okay. And then I, I have, like, like, we know there's a mental health worker shortage in the world, right, at the moment. And JESSA certainly has not been spared of this challenge this year. We heard from stakeholders, families of long waiting lists and multiple, or losing staff multiple times in one school year. So in this contract, as it is, or in this procurement thing, is there any safeguard to ensure the presence of staff during the summer camp?
So I, I checked with the staff that supervises this program. And yes, it's going to be with counselors that are already offering the service to the specific students. As you mentioned, there is shortages, you know, in Maryland, in our counties, you know, nationwide of staff that provides mental health supports. But the office meets with JESSA and Thrive monthly But the office meets with JESSA and Thrive monthly to look at staffing, challenges might be coming. So they're currently trying to stay on top of that. Obviously, it's nothing that they can resolve by their, on their own, but they continue working with them to make, to ensure the continuity of services for the students.
Okay. And to clarify, this is just a one year for this summer? Is it just for this month? This has no future year?
Currently, correct, sorry. Currently, it is because they have additional fundings in the Title IV grant, 100,000, and it's going to be used just this summer to do this, to support this.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to move 7-1?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you, board members. We will now move on to action, agenda item number eight. I will ask Mrs. Mandrowski to lead the discussion on the homework policy.
Yes, thank you very much. Today, we're going to talk about final action on policy IKB, which is our homework policy. For a little bit of background, on March 19th of 2024, the Board of Education tentatively adopted a revised draft policy IKB homework. The tentatively adopted policy was distributed for public comment from March 20th of 2024 to April 24th of 2024. And considering the public comments received and the policy management committee's review, revisions have been made to this policy to affirm the value of homework that is purposefully designed to attain curricular objectives in a manner that is consistent with established Board of Education commitments and research-based best practices. On May 16th of 2024, the board's policy management committee reviewed the public comments received and is now recommending final action by the board today to adopt the revisions of policy IKB. So with that background, I will turn it over to Sally and let you take it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mandrowski, and thank you, President Sylvestre and all members of the board. Joining me at the table today is Mrs. Stephanie Brant, Director, Department of Pre-K Curriculum in the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs. And joining us virtually is our recent, very recent graduate, Mr. Nico Durazio, the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs Education Policy Apprentice. They and other members of the writing team have been instrumental in the rewrite of policy IKB. We will be presenting the changes the writing team has made to policy IKB in response to comments received during the public comment period. But first, I will turn to Mr. Durazio to provide an overview of the commenters and the engagement activities.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and good evening, members of the board, Board President Sylvestre and Dr. Johnson. My name is Nico Durazio, and I am a recent graduate of a high school, and I also serve as an education policy apprentice in the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs. You will notice in your public engagement summary for policy IKB that our stakeholder engagement began well in advance of the public comment period. The last time we met, we gave you a thorough description of our student outreach efforts during the summer of 2023. To recap, extensive feedback was sought and received during July of 2023 from teachers and nearly 200 students who participated in discussion groups and completed questionnaires that informed the initial policy drafting stage. Since the board took tentative action on March 19th, you'll note a wide variety of efforts to distribute the draft and see comments through text, email outreach, and publications for staff, students, and families. In addition, memos to principals requested that they communicate through their school channels. On a personal note, I'd like to convey how important this work has been to me. As we all know, homework has certainly been a hot topic. Remembering back to every single class that I've been in, homework has always been at the center of the conversation. In fact, you'll notice our student response was so enthusiastic that students used all available public comment channels to comment, even submitting homework comments and responses to other policies. And as a student, I'm all too familiar with the conversations of how much homework we were receiving, the difficulty of each homework, and the hours-long FaceTime calls to work out troubling homework problems. And despite being student advocates, we had no way of fixing the problems that we faced with homework, until now. Knowing the needs of students, parents and guardians, teachers, and the community, I'm so incredibly proud to present this work. Having been able to meet firsthand with fellow students from the Montgomery County Regional Student Government Association, the Smol Advisory Council, and now 15 student focus groups across the county, I am confident that this policy fully addresses the needs of students today. Truthfully, I feel like IKB is not just another piece of educational policy, but a policy written both by and for the MCPS community. I'd like to now turn to Ms. Brant to discuss the public comments that we received.
Good afternoon, President Sylvestre, Dr. Johnson, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you, Nico. I'm Stephanie Brant, Director of Pre-Ked 12 Curriculum Operations and Support. We heard from students, staff, parents, guardians, and community members. The majority agreed the policy met the needs of all students. When we dug further into about a quarter who disagreed, we found strong support for the policy, but repeated concerns about variance in resources and parental support at home. The predominant themes that emerged from adult respondents were support for differing purposes and expectations by elementary and secondary level. So you'll notice on page two that we refined the language to highlight the support for 20 minutes of daily reading with elementary school students. The importance of homework as part of the student learning experience was often noted, also concerns about inequity, including economically disadvantaged students and emergent multilingual learners, and the need for more explicit attention to the needs of emergent multilingual learners. We addressed this in two places in the amended draft. On page three, where we re, where we reference English learner plans, and also on page five, where we reference these English learner plans among the accommodations that are part of purposely designed homework. Just one further note, that the benefit of working on this policy at the same time as policy IOD, which is Education of English Language Learners, is the opportunity it provided to look across both documents to address the needs of our emergent multilingual learners. Lastly, MCPS student respondents provided feedback around the amount of time spent on homework. We also had a significant number of comments from students that there should be no homework on weekends. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Nico, and thank you, Ms. Brant. I am going to highlight two additional amendments that we discussed and made some changes to as the result of the policy management committee deliberations. So on page four, lines 86 to 104, the updated language provides for those students whose religious observances are not already addressed by the MCPS calendar. When a student's absence is excused for a religious observance, the student shall not be required to make up work assigned for practice or preparation. And then on page five, lines 117 and 119, we maintain that teachers can best determine the nature, frequency, and length of homework to achieve curricular objectives, but the language allows, at the teacher's discretion, to provide opportunities for seeking feedback, seeking homework support during class as feasible and appropriate, or avoiding homework over the weekends when possible. And with that, we are ready for your discussion and comments.
Great. Thank you so much. I will look at my colleagues and to see if anybody, I was gonna say, I know Mr. Said has some comments at least that he would like to make, whether there are questions or not, but go ahead, Mr. Said.
Yeah, you know, for the last time, I want to thank the whole team for this, for this fantastic policy. I want to thank you as well, Nico. The amount of engagement done, I think, was, was great. It was fantastic. We saw a lot of student engagement, as Nico said earlier, on a multitude of different policies, which I think shows students' passion. And I just want to reiterate my support for the amendments, both in, you know, the religious area and when to assign homework, as previously stated.
Great, thank you. I too want to say thank you very much. Again, I know we've discussed it before, but Nico, you did an incredible amount of outreach, and it is very heartwarming to see all of that participation being put onto paper. So thank you for that, and thank you all for your revisions and hearing us over and over and over again. So with that, does, if nobody else has any questions or comments, I will move this policy for final action out of committee.
I will second that motion.
Yep, great. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this policy. It is now 5:20. The board will take a 15-minute recess. We will be back at 5:35.
Good afternoon, again, President Silvestri, Board members and Dr. Johnson.
Good evening, Heather Dublinsky, Executive Director, Office of the Chief Financial Officer. Am I good to begin?
Yes, Ms. Dublinsky.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Silvestri, Members of the Board, and Dr. Taylor. Congratulations again. We are so very excited to have you join MCPS as our Superintendent. This evening, we're here to share with you an update to the January 11th resolution brought forward by Board Member Julie Yang related to expanding work-based learning opportunities through the procurement process by engaging with businesses who respond to contract solicitations. Next slide, please. The Work-Based Learning Expansion Team aligned our four goals of work with the requested outcomes of the resolution. The first is to expand work-based opportunities. This not only provides greater experiences for our students, but also supports local businesses by providing them with a talented pool of candidates for their recruitment and work-based needs. We want to provide a variety of options for our students. When we think of contracts, many of us go straight to thinking of construction-type projects, but we have thousands of solicitations each year in a variety of programs from medical support to photography, and even our trade-based contracts may have opportunities in things such as finance and human resources. This pilot program allows us to tap into the wide range of work and opportunities that we can provide for our students. We also want to increase access. By leveraging the procurement process, we expand access of opportunities to our students, but we also, again, give our business partners a highly skilled and educated talent pool from which they can recruit from. And alignment, and it's important that our work aligns with the requirements for the Blueprint and student career learning. Next slide, please. To share what the Work-Based Learning Expansion Project Team has done to date, we were aware this resolution was coming down the pipeline prior to January. So back in the fall, we met to initially discuss the feasibility of using the procurement process to gain more businesses to our workplace work-based learning program. Since the resolution was brought forward in January, we've met numerous times and have representatives from procurement, the Department of Career and College Readiness, and the Office of the General Counsel. Together, we have created outreach materials, including a survey for businesses who are responding to solicitations to provide information to us about the workplace business learning opportunities that they can provide for our students. We've also created graphic materials so we can share that with businesses and students to let them know about these opportunities. We developed a recommended pilot program, which we will provide more information to you about this evening, and so to begin, I will turn it over to Angela McIntosh-Davis, Director of Procurement, to share how we will engage with businesses during our pilot program and beyond.
Next slide, please. And good afternoon, again, President Silvestri, Board members, and Dr. Johnson. The Division of Procurement will support the efforts of the Department of College and Career Readiness to streamline and centralize the work-based learning workflow through engagement with suppliers by utilizing our formal procurement process. In this effort, we will seek to identify potential suppliers through responses to our solicitations. Potential engagements will be identified through a link to an online form, completed and submitted by the offerer. Once the solicitation closes, the evaluation will move along through the normal process. Procurement and work-based learning will have access to completed forms identifying the interest of local or industry-like businesses. Once the awardee is identified, recommended, and approved, the supplier will be cross-referenced to determine their interest or capability to offer an apprenticeship, internship, job shadow opportunity, et cetera. The work-based learning team could then reach out to the awardees to finalize the opportunity. During this pilot period, it is anticipated that there could be several new opportunities where work-based learning can engage with a single or multiple vendors per award and hereby establish an ongoing relationship with suppliers engaged in the program. I will now turn the presentation to our colleagues, Dr. LaGrange and Mr. Krause.
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. Again, good afternoon, President Silvestri, Dr. Johnson, and Board members. Our efforts to increase student access to work-based learning opportunities is aligned directly with our district's strategic plan and blueprint legislation. Work-based learning is not an after-school or summer activity, but rather an integral part of students' learning experiences, as it allows them to explore their interests, apply their learning, stay engaged in schooling, and build professional connections and skills that will prepare them for the workforce and increase their employability and career readiness. While this year, over 3,000 students participated in work-based learning through apprenticeships, site-based work, internships, and summer rise, we know that more students would take advantage of these opportunities during the school year and the summer. In order to increase student participation in work-based learning, we will be hosting additional information sessions for students and families, both virtually and in person, coordinating marketing efforts, learning from other districts, and, most importantly, providing ongoing professional development for school-based staff, which includes internship coordinators, counselors, career advisors, and school leaders. As a central office, we will focus on increasing business partnerships and creating a new web-based platform that will ensure equitable access to employers for students at all of our 25 high schools. Access to work-based learning should not be based on one's zip code. Instead of having students look through old Manila folders for employers in their individual schools, we want students to explore opportunities based on their interests across the entire county using a web-based platform. As we focus our efforts around recruiting businesses, internship coordinators will be able to focus their time on helping students develop their resumes, complete the job application process, strategically prepare for upcoming interviews, and update their resumes based on their new skills and certification attainment. I will now pass it on to Mr. Sean Krause, Work-Based Learning Supervisor.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Again, good afternoon, President Silvestri, Board members, and Dr. Johnson. This communication and outreach component is thanks of the Maryland Works grant that we've received through MSD-E. This past year, MCPS awarded this was awarded this grant so we could take a look at the design and infrastructure of our apprenticeship program, work-based learning, and determine how it can best align our district with the requirements of Blueprint. In order to do that, we identified four hub high schools to create the working model that we would replicate for all 21 high schools, and the four high schools included in the hub school work groups has been Gaithersburg, Seneca Valley High School, Springbrook, and BCC. The very first item that the hub schools felt we needed to create was common language, which would guide our school district for both students, parents, and employers. The infographic that's captured on the slide is also provided for you. The hub schools felt it would be good to have a one-page infographic to create consistency, create common language, and help everyone understand what opportunities are available for students to be able to access. So very, starting from the very beginning, where students begin to explore opportunities, to completing the application process, to actually practicing for the interview and interviewing for the opportunity, because these opportunities are very competitive. And on the infographic, we also added a QR code so that students could easily go to the MCPS work-based learning website, where each one of these programs have communicated what the program is. There are video clips that were developed by our MCPS student apprentices, and they have opportunity also for employers, there's a page where we have the survey for them to complete as well. So that website is designed to help both students, parents, and employers be aware of how they can access work-based learning in MCPS. Then, as we continue to look at our infrastructure and our systems to be able to scale and grow work-based learning, Maryland Works allowed us to create an RFP that would allow for a work-based platform that was web-based and create a workflow so that students from any one of our 25 high schools could go through the application process, and based on feedback from employers, it creates a workflow where the MCPS Central Work-Based Learning Team is engaging with the employer. We are having an MCPS-to-an-employer conversation, and then we can channel that opportunity that's identified by the employer into the platform, and students from all 25 high schools now will be able to see and apply and be able to have an opportunity to access that opportunity. Also, as a district, we continue to see more and more interest. Apprenticeship continues to grow. Each year, we've seen growth. Internship continues to grow. This summer, we have tripled our numbers as far as the number of students accessing internship and apprenticeship, and so we have to have a system, a process, a workflow that works for our school district, given the size and the scope of work that we have. And so we believe that this opportunity to take a look at the RFP process will help us, as a district, create more opportunities for students, help us grow the portfolio so that those students have equal access, and for our students that don't have the social capital to access opportunities, we have students that have the resources available now, that they can see the opportunities, they know when the deadline is, they have the internship coordinator at the home high school that can work directly with them, and that support is there from the time they begin the process to when they are hired by the employer. So we feel like this resolution is a great strategy for MCPS to be able to use and begin with the pilot. At this time, I would like to transition back to Heather Dublinsky.
Thank you, Sean. Next slide, please. So our work for the Work-Based Learning Project has already begun, but we wanted to share with you what we will be doing over the next year in hopes that we can come back to you in the spring and share an update with you. This August, we will deploy the interest form for solicitations and open the student interest form at the start of the school year. Throughout the year, we will monitor and assess the pilot, collecting data on how many opportunities are available to students and the impact on the increased workload for the involved offices. We will gather feedback from staff, students, and organizations so that we have voice data as well as time and impact data. Next spring, we would like to come back and share the successes of the program and also information about expanding the program beyond the pilot, both internally within MCPS and additional businesses as well. Thank you again for asking us to be here today and for allowing us some creative liberty with our presentation. We look forward to bringing this type of innovation to the pilot, and we now open it for discussion.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues to turn their lights on if they have questions. Let's start with Mrs. Majowski.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you all very much for the presentation and the work you're doing on this. I think we all can agree that it's very important for our students and hopefully our futures. Very lovely presentation, by the way. So I was thinking when you said somebody mentioned about the one of your interns having done the website, and I don't know if they did this, but it's very easy to follow and create a fish. I guess my only one question is, how are we incorporate, are we, maybe not it's how, but are we incorporating this work in any way with our career-based pathways at all?
Yes, I can answer that. So absolutely, the really exciting piece is that all of our offices are all working together. We are under one umbrella, so not only are we making sure that the school staff has had an ongoing opportunity for professional development, we've created an action plan for each school based on their staffing allocation and based on their on their numbers for our work-based learning. We've done that throughout the year. We have provided in-person professional learning opportunities for internship coordinators, but we're also working very closely with counselors and their teams and career advisors. So we really think it's going to be important that for this upcoming school year, that the professional development, it cannot be done in silos. So we can't have all these amazing opportunities for students and just hope that the information gets to them. The key, the linchpin, is going to be the professional development for for all the adults who support students, so that we're sharing the same information, and students can have a clear understanding.
And blueprint legislation. Work-based learning is not an after-school or summer activity, but rather an integral part of students' learning experiences as it allows them to explore their interests, apply their learning, stay engaged in schooling, and build professional connections and skills that will prepare them for the workforce and increase their employability and career readiness. While this year, over 3,000 students participated in work-based learning through apprenticeships, site-based work, internships, and summer rise, we know that more students would take advantage of these opportunities during the school year and the summer. In order to increase student participation in work-based learning, we will be hosting additional information sessions for students and families, both virtually and in person, coordinating marketing efforts, learning from other districts, and most importantly, providing ongoing professional development for school-based staff, which includes internship coordinators, counselors, career advisors, and school leaders. As central office, we will focus on increasing business partnerships and creating a new web-based platform that will ensure equitable access to employers for students at all of our 25 high schools. Access to work-based learning should not be based on one's zip code. Instead of having students look through old Manila folders for employers in their individual schools, we want students to explore opportunities based on their interest across the entire county using a web-based platform. As we focus our efforts around recruiting businesses, internship coordinators will be able to focus their time on helping students develop their resumes, complete the job application process, strategically prepare for upcoming interviews, and update their resumes based on their new skills and certification attainment. I will now pass it on to Mr. Sean Crassa, work-based learning supervisor.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Again, good afternoon, President Silvestri, board members, and Dr. Johnson. This communication and outreach component is thanks of the Maryland Works grant that we've received through MSDE. This past year, MCPS awarded this, was awarded this grant so we could take a look at the design and infrastructure of our apprenticeship program, work-based learning, and determine how it can best align our district with the requirements of Blueprint. In order to do that, we identified four hub high schools to create the working model that we would replicate for all 21 high schools. And the four high schools included in the hub school work groups has been Gaithersburg, Seneca Valley High School, Springbrook, and BCC. The very first item that the hub schools felt we needed to create was common language, which would guide our school district for both students, parents, and employers. The infographic that's captured on the slide is also provided for you. The hub schools felt it would be good to have a one-page infographic to create consistency, create common language, and help everyone understand what opportunities are available for students to be able to access. So very, starting from the very beginning where students begin to explore opportunities, to completing the application process, to actually practicing for the interview and interviewing for the opportunity because these opportunities are very competitive. And on the infographic, we also added a QR code so that students could easily go to the MCPS work-based learning website where each one of these programs have communicated what the program is. There are video clips that were developed by our MCPS student apprentices, and they have opportunity also for employers, there's a page where we have the survey for them to complete as well. So that website is designed to help both students, parents, and employers be aware of how they can access work-based learning in MCPS. Then, as we continue to look at our infrastructure and our systems to be able to scale and grow work-based learning, Maryland Works allowed us to create an RFP that would allow for a work-based platform that was web-based and create a workflow so that students from any one of our 25 high schools could go through the application process. And based on feedback from employers, it creates a workflow where the MCPS central work-based learning team is engaging with the employer. We are having an MCPS-to-an-employer conversation, and then we can channel that opportunity that's identified by the employer into the platform, and students from all 25 high schools now will be able to see and apply and be able to have an opportunity to access that opportunity. Also, as a district, we continue to see more and more interest. Apprenticeship continues to grow. Each year, we've seen growth. Internship continues to grow. This summer, we have tripled our numbers as far as the number of students accessing internship and apprenticeship. And so we have to have a system, a process, a workflow that works for our school district, given the size and the scope of work that we have. And so we believe that this opportunity to take a look at the RFP process will help us, as a district, create more opportunities for students, help us grow the portfolio so that those students have equal access. And for our students that don't have the social capital to access opportunities, we have students that have the resources available now, that they can see the opportunities, they know when the deadline is, they have the internship coordinator at the home high school that can work directly with them, and that support is there from the time they begin the process to when they are hired by the employer. So we feel like this resolution is a great strategy for MCPS to be able to use and begin with the pilot. At this time, I would like to transition back to Heather Dublin.
Thank you, Sean. Next slide, please. So our work for the work-based learning project has already begun, but we wanted to share with you what we will be doing over the next year in hopes that we can come back to you in the spring and share an update with you. This August, we will deploy the interest form for solicitations and open the student interest form at the start of the school year. Throughout the year, we will monitor and assess the pilot, collecting data on how many opportunities are available to students and the impact on the increased workload for the involved offices. We will gather feedback from staff, students, and organizations so that we have voice data as well as time and impact data. Next spring, we would like to come back and share the successes of the program and also information about expanding the program beyond the pilot, both internally within MCPS and additional businesses as well. Thank you again for asking us to be here today and for allowing us some creative liberty with our presentation. We look forward to bringing this type of innovation to the pilot, and we now open it for discussion.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues to turn their lights on if they have questions. Let's start with Mrs. Mondrosky.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you all very much for the presentation and the work you're doing on this. I think we all can agree that it's very important for our students and hopefully our futures. Very lovely presentation, by the way. So I was thinking when you said, somebody mentioned about the, one of your interns having done the website, and I don't know if they did this, but it's very easy to follow and create a fish. I guess my only one question is, how are we incorporate, are we, maybe not it's how, but are we incorporating this work in any way with our career-based pathways at all?
Yes, I can answer that. So absolutely, the really exciting piece is that all of our offices are all working together. We are under one umbrella, so not only are we making sure that the school staff has had an ongoing opportunity for professional development, we created an action plan for each school based on their staffing allocation and based on their, on their numbers for our work-based learning. We've done that throughout the year. We have provided in-person professional learning opportunities for internship coordinators, but we're also working very closely with counselors and their teams and career advisors. So we really think it's going to be important that for this upcoming school year, that the professional development, it cannot be done in silos. So we can't have all these amazing opportunities for students and just hope that the information gets to them. The key, the linchpin, is going to be the professional development for, for all the adults who support students, so that we're sharing the same information, and students can have a clear understanding, not only with the middle school, knowing what they can expect in high school with the programs, with career technical education, and now also with the internships, apprenticeship, and the other opportunities, summer rise, and all the other opportunities. So we feel as a district, we have a plethora of opportunities. Sometimes it's just getting the information out to everyone. That's been our barrier, and we're really excited about the work now that we'll be able to create that common language and a common platform.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions. So going back to slide four, first question I have, so you mentioned using the procurement process, issuance of RFPs as an opportunity to assess interest from those who are seeking to work with MCPS to provide these kinds of opportunities, but you said businesses will not be evaluated on their work-based learning opportunities as part of the RFP process, and that you're not going to be engaging with, with companies if they aren't successful in the RFP, and my question is, why not?
Because it's the pilot portion of this process, we're going to just start out with awardees only that, that have, you know, gone through the solicitation, been evaluated. Because what we're not doing also is not making their response to the survey a part of the criteria that they're being evaluated on. So we're not going to not select them because they're not interested in participating in the work-based learning program. So we want to start out slowly by just engaging with those who are awarded a contract.
And if I can add to that-
It's an opportunity, it's a missed opportunity when people reach out to us if we're not making them aware that we are trying to build these partnerships and let them express interest to us, whether they move forward in the process. I'm just an observation.
I wanted to add to that. So you've always been a strong supporter, and we appreciate that. What we're trying to figure out with this pilot is our team is consisted, consists of two staff members who are also doing all the professional development for all 25 high schools and daily working with businesses, and so, and also working with various grants. So it's really, at this point, a capacity issue. And so we look forward, we have been able to hire some TPT staff this summer to help us with business recruitment. And so we definitely hope that, you know, if we're able to get additional staffing in the future, we would love to be able to, of course, you know, review all of the RFPs and review all of the applicants, but we just want to be mindful of being fair and having a process that's sustainable.
Thank you. And that, I'm glad you kind of segued into my next question. You talked about hub schools, and you mentioned Gaithersburg, Seneca Valley, Bethesda, Chevy Chase, and Springbrook. And then the pilot for the coming year, which involves all 25 high schools? So tell me, just very briefly, what's the difference, the hub schools, these four of the 25, and then the pilot that is, goes out to all?
Thank you for the question, Board Member Harris. The Maryland Works grant allowed us to take a look at our district and the current state. And so when you look at our high schools, we have 25 high schools, there's approximately 12,000 students on average in 11th and 12th grade. And so in order to be able to begin to move our district and align it with what Blueprint is asking us to do, we felt it would be best to take four high schools in each part of the county and work directly with them through the systems, processes, from recruitment, communicating of information, to the application process, to preparing students for the interview, so that we could learn how to approach that, from the master scheduling component to the internship coordinator at those schools. We have positioned each one of those four high schools with a full-time internship coordinator, so they have capacity to work with students through that process and support them with that, especially for our schools where, well, not every school has a 1.0 internship coordinator. In some cases, there's a .2, .4. So the strategy was to start where we have the four full-time internship coordinators so that we could get a working model, take what we've learned, and then communicate it to the other 21, and continue to advocate for additional staffing at those other high schools. And then for that employer engagement, it is, it takes time to engage with the employer, identify what their interest is, what their expectations are, how that student is going to be trained, do they have a mentor on staff that can work directly with that student? So it is very complex, and as we have learned here, it does take time to adjust for a district our size. So that was the thought process behind having four high schools to begin the work.
And just to add to that, if I can just clarify, so the four schools are our model schools, right?
Beta testers.
Exactly. So we didn't want every school to have to invent their own wheel. So the four high schools were using through the grant to model. However, as soon as the digital platform is created, all of the job opportunities will be uploaded to that platform. So while we on the side have the four schools that are model schools, every student in every high school will have access to the jobs and the businesses that are available. So that part does not have to wait. So that's what we're really excited, is that one, one lane is building the concept of what it should look like, what is needed, because it's more than just posting the jobs. And on the other hand, it's making sure that as soon as we can, we're uploading all the business opportunities on that website. And as we're doing monthly professional development with internship coordinators, they will then be able to guide students and show them what's available within the district.
So the hub schools are the model schools, the beta testers, and then, and then, but this pilot next year is open to all, all 25 high schools. So is this the PD you were talking about, that even the schools that are not the hub schools, the beta testing schools, you know, somebody at those schools is going to be getting this PD, so they are aware of the opportunity, they're making it known, and they're ensuring their students can take advantage of the opportunity?
Correct, and we're really excited. We are confident that the platform that we're going to create is going to be very user-friendly for our students. It might present some obstacles for the adults, and some getting used to, but we're pretty confident that our students will be able to not just manage it and access it, but be able to upload their resumes and really engage in the process. And so again, our goal as district office is to bring the businesses to the internship coordinators so they can focus on students and help them, help them align, align their interests and their work. And the other thing also that's important to think about in this process is, once we get the businesses, we have to go out and really make sure and visit them, see them, make sure that they're safe and appropriate for our students. And so it's an extensive process to engage one business at a time.
So just wondering too, how are we engaging with industry in the county that already have MOUs with us? And I'm thinking specifically about the health professions. Sean and I were together at Edison, and we had two MOUs for my program, healthcare providers in the county, that have already been, as you said, vetted and have a variety of work professions that they are continuously recruiting for, not just in the actual hands-on delivery of medical care, but they all have food service, and they all have hospitality. And so are we building into existing MOUs these opportunities and bringing them into this?
That's absolutely part of our vision, and it would just be based on our capacity with our staffing, but it's absolutely a part of our vision. We recognize we have a multitude of businesses that we already work very closely with, and we want to make sure that we expand opportunities. And even if you can just speak to the Dulles Airport piece, I think that's really exciting, the newest one.
Yes, and this past year with our hub high schools, we've had opportunity to travel to other regions of the country to take a look at working models. We had opportunity to travel to Charleston, South Carolina. They are 10 years in, and they have a working model. And Ms. Harris, to your question with the, the healthcare, so for example, in Charleston, South Carolina, they have five hospitals that come together, and they do a group pathway approach. So the employer, the five hospitals identify the positions, like patient care technician, certified nursing assistant as the starting position, and then they map the pathway out to leading to a registered nurse degree. So it's high school to apprenticeship. And when we traveled there, we also had opportunity to bring a representative from Montgomery College. And so as we are learning from other districts and looking at best practices from working models, yes, we do have that strategy in working with Montgomery College to develop a, like, apprenticeship pathway and bring employers together by group versus like onesy-twosy, if you will. We also had opportunity to travel to District 214 in Illinois, just outside Chicago, to take a look at their working model. And they too take that group strategy where you bring employers together, and they have commonalities, and you identify what the work-based learning experience is. And then the employer says, well, this is how we want for them to be trained, here's the industry-recognized credential that goes with that. And so that's where we work closely with the employers to not only create the program, but get feedback on how it's going. Are we preparing our students so that they're prepared, qualified, ready to do this work? Do we need to adjust or adapt? We are also looking at virtual options. We are the first county in the state to offer a virtual apprenticeship. We're partnering with a company out of Dulles Airport. So the student will be able to take public transit for orientation and periodic check-ins, and then they'll be able to work remotely in their apprenticeship experience from their home high school. So we are charting new territory in some cases with Maryland Department of Labor, and it's exciting to be able to build that portfolio of opportunities for students because I think in time, we'll begin to see more students not only get the training and the career experience, but lead to career employment after high school and continued training.
Awesome. So I'm assuming the students at McGruder and the aviation program are sort of being directly made aware of the Dulles opportunities since it sort of feeds into their-
It's an apprenticeship, so it's open to, to all students. And again, our goal is to do the marketing so that students at all the high schools, including those students, are aware of it, and then they can apply if they choose to an interview for it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Said?
Yes, thank you again for this. It's really good to see the system act on resolutions as quickly as this and kind of implement things. So that's fantastic. And kind of, I'll keep this brief. I think one thing I just want to know, kind of in relation to what we were talking about is in terms of outreach to students. You know, I love these programs, and one of the, the things that I always see being a weak link for a lot of fantastic programs we have is not enough people know about it. You know, you'll go to the average student, you'll go to the school and just say, did you guys know that you can be an apprentice? You know, there's internships. They'll say, what are you talking about? You know, and that's, I think, the biggest piece that I know has been a challenge during my term with initiatives I've done personally, is like, I can do them, but do students know what the change is happening? So really, my recommendation is I implore you to use every single avenue to, to, you know, reach out to students. This is, you know, this is fantastic. Like Ms. Mondrosky said, incredibly easy to read and understand. And I would say, you know, utilize all avenues. I know we have the next student member of the board sitting in the audience, use, you know, him for social media, you know, when he's doing school visits and everything like that. Go to schools directly. Student leadership organizations are always a good place to start, not one to end, but you know, there's so many students across the county who are just, you know, want to get every opportunity to further their education, and you know, meeting the students where they are is so important. So just, you know, you know, food for thought when you're considering outreach, make sure to use as many avenues as possible because this is a fantastic program, and I don't want just a small group of students to know about it and then utilize it, but have as many students as possible, especially the ones that could really use these opportunities most to know about them. So just, you know, a word of advice is just use as many outreach opportunities as you can.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you. So I'm so excited, and, and this is, I have to say, so well-done, right? Montgomery County has so many thriving businesses and provides rich opportunities for work-based learning. So when this resolution was introduced, when I introduced it in January, it is to aim to use these rich resources. And then I don't think it's a secret that traditionally, high school internship program largely depends on the families, student families, social network. So this is really aimed at making internship an integral part, work-based learning an integral part of the student's experience, open access, and elevate equity in our, in our system, right? So the resolution directs the system to break the silos between the procurement process and our student curriculum department. So I think this is a wonderful collaboration and strengthens collaboration between our central office and school-based staff. So the outcome will be, hopefully, more student, more opportunities for student, business are more a part of our school system, and, and also, students have opportunity learning in real industries, in real-life companies, right? So your plan is very thoughtful and workable with measurable timelines and outcomes. So I really look forward to hearing the updates next spring. I'm extremely thankful, and I'm very excited for our students. So please carry out with due diligence, and here is to the success of the program.
Thank you so much. We so look forward to this work. As you mentioned, this really is a great opportunity, even though we're kind of intentionally siloed at this table, to work together, you know, bring together operations, finance, and our student learning pieces, and we are so excited for this project. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes, sure. No, so thank you for this. Like Mr. Said said, this was a great turnaround time in terms of response. And so my question or thought is, and I'm sure you all have thought about this, when I look at the, the MCPS work-based learning program, like this sheet right here, under where it says prerequisites, I'd be interested to hear or see, after you've done this, what the employers are going to determine our prerequisites so that, what we can do very early on, because some of the, some of the grade levels are, once you get to high school, that we are really letting our middle schoolers know in advance what the prerequisites, what they are, so that they could try to make sure they can obtain them, and it's not, you know, get to this grade level and, you know, have a level of disappointment because you can't participate. So are we thinking about that? And if so, what's that look like?
I wanted to share, so last year, we introduced our first middle school career technical education and program exploration for all of our middle schools. We've received really great feedback from students, and we intentionally did it for our seventh graders because we know, we didn't want to wait till eighth grade because in the fall, students are applying, and the process can be overwhelming because there's so many choices. So we were intentionally introducing that to our seventh graders. And again, we did it through Canvas so that students had it, did access to it, they could watch it time and time again, they could show it, watch it with their parents. We did it again, we received great feedback from schools. We did it for the second time a couple of weeks ago, for, again, for our seventh graders. Some schools even showed the information to their sixth and eighth graders, they showed it multiple times. And then what we did again this year for the first time is we had a webinar. We had over 400 parents following that event attend our webinar, and we were all there, able to speak to our programs, which was really helpful. So again, and what Mr. Said said, thinking about multiple venues to share in information. And, and so we will continue to do that, and with our career advisors, we work very closely with them and counselors. So we will be attending regular counselor, monthly meetings, having open hours with them, and we just feel like we have to get our staff to know what's available, and we have to start sharing it in middle school. Eventually, of course, our goal is to go to fifth grade. So right now, we're focusing on middle school, and then we shifted down to fifth grade so that when students are coming to middle school, they're exploring their interests, they're taking the RYSAC, they're learning what they like. They know exactly what the difference is between regional, county-wide programs, what's available at their school, and then we can introduce again, and they can do that additional exploration through work-based learning. So we have, we have a plan, and we're really excited to branch out to elementary school as well.
I knew you were thinking about it, and you, can you just real briefly for me, just explain to people what RYSAC is, because they may not know, and I do think that is really important that we're doing that because our students will already have the prerequisites when they're going through that.
Absolutely. So as part of the career advising process, students are able to take a survey that identifies their interests, and they're able to find out what their strengths are, whether they're entrepreneur, an artist, they're just different interests. And the whole idea is for students to begin considering various careers, and not in a way where it's limiting, which is like you should be, you should only think about this career, but based on their strength to consider multitude of opportunities. And then our goal is also, when working with career advisors, we're creating resources for them, so they will be able to say, based on your interest and your personality characteristics, here are the programs at the high school that you will be going to, here is what's available, here is what's available at the district level, county level, and everyone will again use the same language and be able to speak to the same opportunities.
So I'm not creating more work for you, but is there a way that when we get the- But is there a way that when we get the employers, that we put the RISEC for that particular career, that way students will know that and be able to identify it very easily?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that question. So part of Maryland Works grant allowed us to do an RFP for a work-based learning platform. And we included career advisors and a representative from WorkSource Montgomery on that committee. And so the product that we're partnering with here and will be introducing this year, students will be able to complete the RISEC in the work-based learning platform, and then it'll populate their interest with internship or apprenticeship opportunities that relate. And then they'll be able to see all the opportunities. But that platform will allow students in grades nine through 12 to be able to see what's available, what the prerequisites are, what they have to prepare for. Certain employers may have an age requirement, or a driver's license, or they may have to take public transit. So it'll help both students and families begin to plan ahead, especially if there's an opportunity they see themselves accessing in two or three years' time.
This is right on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf?
I appreciate the work you've done on this. This is really very clearly laid out. And I appreciate what you were just saying, and, and tapping into what Ms. Evans asked. The platform you're talking about, where you said it will allow students in grades nine through 12, well, I may have said this to you before, but when I visited a school in California, they started exposing the kids to this in elementary school. And I think that is very important. But I, my, my second question, I guess it's a question, is at one time, we talked about looking at our total requirements for graduation, because we have more than other districts. And I'm wondering now, with the blueprint and some of the requirements and the work you're doing on this, if this isn't a good time to start looking at those requirements and checking to see whether or not they're still really useful in light of the experiences they could get and the work that they could get doing some of this that would fit in with the blueprint requirements. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I think we need to be lobbying MSDE to take a look at every single thing we force every student in Maryland to do to get a high school diploma, and ask whether it's still relevant in the 21st century, because I don't think all of it is. Many of you in this room have heard me say that before. So I do have a question. So when I'm looking at your, this, and under this, this builds on Ms. Evans' question, the site-based work experience, when it says CCRD course, I'm assuming that means these would be tailored to students who've taken cybersecurity or health professions, and they've already gotten training in a profession, in a particular career area?
The CCRD is college career research and development. It's a CTE program of study. So in grade 11, they have opportunity to learn about different college programs, industry-recognized credential. We plan to update the curriculum to integrate a component about apprenticeship. So it's a course that would allow them to explore, do research, and then in grade 12, they have a seminar attached to the site-based work experience, and they work for an employer for 135 hours. And so that's a CTE program of study in itself. For our internship program, when students are going through and taking CTE coursework, there's oftentimes opportunity to do a capstone project to complete that program of study. So internship can be taken as an elective, or it can be taken in partnership with a CTE program of study to complete it. And going into next school year, internship and apprenticeship will count as advanced level credit. And we can celebrate Nico Durazio. He was a part of the board meeting earlier. Nico was an education policy apprentice in our office this past year, and his research and feedback from students indicated we needed to take a look at on-level versus advanced level credit. When students are earning an industry-recognized credential, they're going out to the employer. In some cases, they're taking a course that's earning college-level credit as part of their apprenticeship. So to Nico's credit and his advocating on behalf of MCPS students, next year, it will be advanced level credit for all students.
Yeah, I, I mean, not for now, but I would like more information then again about the CCRD course, which sounds like it's a standalone. So anyway, for another time. But one of the things I did want to mention, so you said earlier, these opportunities are going to be available to all, but they're going to be competitive. And so I'm hoping that in the dashboard that you're creating, we are also going to be tracking to look at where students are coming from that are applying for these opportunities, and how the data tracks with who is, who is actually being successful in these competitive opportunities, so that we are then looking very closely at what we are doing school to school to school, because we have a lot of inequities in MCPS, we just do. And so making sure that we are ensuring that, so it's one thing to say, students from every high school can be exposed, can apply, but it's another thing to say, are they actually prepared to be successful? So I hope that we're going to be tracking that.
So I think, couldn't agree more, and I think this is why this resolution is so critical, because our focus, the shift, is that we feel that central office needs to focus on bringing in businesses. Right now, our traditional responsibility has been for the internship coordinators at each school to go into their community and to recruit businesses on their own. And this is where the Manila folders came from. And then, of course, if you're in one high school, you hide them, because you don't want anybody else to, because those are for your kids. And it's inequitable, because again, if you're in downtown Rockville, it's very different than from being in one of our rural areas. And so this resolution allows us to begin making that, that shift intentionally, where we're saying, we're central office, our job is to find the businesses. For our internship coordinators, your job is to support students. So we cannot assume that a student could just walk into an interview and just do the interview without any prep work, or that they're just going to create a resume on their own. So that's where students need help. They need help with building their resumes, they need to practice for those interviews, and especially for apprenticeships, you are correct, those are incredibly competitive. And we have no say, so we can't call a business for an apprenticeship and say, please hire these five students. So again, we want the schools to focus on building student capacity for career development, and we want to be able to handle the businesses. And I just want to add to what Mrs. Wolf said. We watched the video from California. We are in 100% agreement. I cried at watching first graders talk about their career interests. And so we, and that's why the goal is eventually to go to fifth grade and then to go all the way down. So that's, we absolutely do want to do that back mapping. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on Ms. Harris's comment, for sure, about this collecting data on applications for this and demographic data? You know, she's absolutely right. You, you will have internship coordinators, but I think it is your job to be sure they're doing their job, because there is a lot of inequity across our system in even how counselors counsel our students. You can see that by just from what some of them come in and say they've never heard of. So I hope you will assume that it is your responsibility, not only to find the positions, but to track and make sure that at least all are having the opportunity to apply for the position. I, I recognize you can't control whether they get the position, but I do think you can control whether that is an employer you still want to do business with.
And I also just wanted to add one more piece, that for this past school year, we had individual, every single high school had a work-based learning action plan where we shared their data with them. So they, they, we gave them their data, and we were monitoring and supporting them in increasing and monitoring their numbers based on their allocated staffing. So you're absolutely right, we want to support schools, but we also want to make sure that they know that there's a level of accountability, and we will do everything we can to support them, but the data is going to be critical.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You've answered a lot of my questions through the discussion, so thank you so much for this work. Super important, internships are good for students, they really help them figure out what they want to do when they go to college, so they don't have to spend money dabbling here and there. And of course, it also aligns with the blueprint. We have a long way to go to, to meet our blueprint requirements in terms of internship. So this is putting us in a good path forward, and I thank you for your time and the work on this, and thank you to Ms. Yang for introducing the resolution. Thank you. Okay. We are moving on to agenda item number 10. Can I get a motion to move 10.1 and 10.2 and block? So moved?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Okay, we are waiting for the updated ethics panel resolution, so we're going to move to 10.4. Mrs. Evans?
Sure. So at the last board meeting, there was a resolution introduced where, for the first time, not calling on administration, but calling on the board staff. And it's a study of the Board of Education's roles and responsibilities. As many of you know, we are the 15th largest school district, and we have more than 160,000 students, 211 schools, and almost 25,000 employees. And so the work has gotten more complex. And what we want to make certain is, as we are trying to continuously improve the school system, we also want to make certain that we are having the same expectation of the work that's occurring in the board office. And so therefore, we are considered part-time, and we want to gather data that really is showing that we are doing more work, closer to being full-time, and it is very time-intensive. And so with that, I'll just read the resolve. There's just been a slight change, and that's in the date. Resolve that the Board of Education directs board staff to collaborate with the board to conduct a comprehensive study of the board's current and projected scope of responsibilities, and present the results to the board by July 18th. And be it further resolved that the results of the study be leveraged to shape the board's annual work plan, build, build public understanding of the vast scope of services in Montgomery County that fall under the board's oversight, including but not limited to capital and operating budget reviews and approval process, adjudicating appeals, advocating in federal, state, and local political arenas, hiring and evaluating the superintendent, engaging in community events and meetings, and numerous constituent engagements. This study will enhance the board's capacity to serve the community by effectively and efficiently performing its many responsibilities.
Move approval?
Second.
Are there any questions or, okay?
Just one thing I wanted, I wanted to say, because I wasn't here at the last meeting when this was presented. I think this is a fantastic resolution. You know, I'm definitely a big advocate that I think, you know, the boards, the board does have, you know, clearly an incredible amount of work, and I think we need to, you know, rethink the, you know, the way that we go about that work. And, you know, I just think that this is, you know, such a great resolution to bring forward to do that. I know as a student, you know, coming on the board, you know, it's definitely a very unique balance, but you know, the work of board members, you know, in a system this big, this large, is, is just incredibly huge. And I think that this, this resolution, recognizing that and seeking to look and reevaluate kind of, you know, not just our scope of work, but you know, what we're working on, our responsibilities and our duties, I think it's fantastic. So I didn't get a chance to speak on this at the last board meeting when it was presented, but I am happy to vote in favor of it today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Said. Being, this is your last board meeting, I am so glad that you have the opportunity, right? Because you have worked hard as a student, so we really do appreciate that. And so I do value your opinion and consider you my colleague. So looking forward to working with Parnell, I see you out there. Yeah. So with that, call, call the vote. All in favor of the resolution?
Okay. Do we need a motion in a second?
So we already did that. We had a motion in a second. Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. So we now have 10.5 board members. Do you have any new business items to bring forward? Seeing none. Okay, we'll go back to the 10.3 appointments to the ethics panel. Whereas on February 29, 1984, the ethics panel was established by the Board of Education, whereas the members of the ethics panel are appointed by the Board of Education, and whereas the board expanded the panel on June 10, 2003, from three to five members. And whereas three vacancies will soon exist on the five-member panel, now there it be resolved that the following individuals be reappointed to serve a three-year term on the ethics panel effective July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2027. David P. Curran and Carrie W. Mitchell. Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We are moving on to agenda item number 11, for informational purposes only. And can I get a motion to adjourn? Move adjournment?
My very last second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you, we are adjourned.